All right, we're gonna hop back into it. Just a minute later than I expected. The next bill we are going to hit here is Bill twenty-one dash zero 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 one, first bill of the year. Surveillance technology in Baltimore for the purpose of prohibiting Baltimore City Government from purchasing or obtaining certain face surveillance technology, prohibiting Baltimore City Government from contracting or subcontracting with another for the purpose of facial surveillance technology, prohibiting any person in Baltimore City from obtaining, retaining, accessing, or using certain face surveillance technology or any information obtained from certain face surveillance technology, requiring the Director of Baltimore City Information and Technology to submit an annual report to the Mayor and City Council regarding the use of surveillance by the Mayor and City Council, providing for certain termination dates, providing for certain penalties, and defining certain terms. This bill was introduced on January eleventh, twenty twenty-one, and it was sponsored by Councilmember Chris Burnett of the Eighth District. I'm gonna open the floor to Councilman Burnett for Councilman Sponsor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and colleagues. So I don't, I don't have much as far as additional commentary. I did send the Committee two amendments for consideration, which were the, well, really one amendment, I'm sorry, one really long amendment that you all should have received that adds additional clarity on how we define facial surveillance systems. In particular, trying to add more clarity after having some feedback from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Safety around concerns about doorbells and, you know, the city's use a reimbursement program for doorbells and sort of making sure that there, if people are participating in that program, reimbursement program, that they are able to submit evidence to the Police Department without any issues should their devices capture a crime. And because there were concerns that the bill as written wasn't, wasn't made clear enough that if that kind of scenario occurred, whether the department would be able to accept footage from any of those devices. And so we worked to try and clean that up a little bit. I had a meeting yesterday with the Director of Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Safety to talk through it one more, one more time before this hearing to make sure we were all on the same page. As that's not the intention of, my intention wasn't to preclude the use of those devices. And so we tried to be as clear as possible that if you want to use that device to monitor who's coming and going into your home or your, your business, or there's also language in there for government buildings that that is an allowable use of technology. And so we, we added a little bit of clarity on that. So other than that, don't have much else on that end. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, thank you, Councilman Burnett. We're gonna hear now from the Agency Representatives. First up, we've got the Law Department.
Hi, Mr. Chair. The amendments are approved for form and legal sufficiency, no issues there.
Awesome, thank you, Hillary. Next, we've got the Baltimore Police Department.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the, excuse me, members of the Committee. Again, for the record, my name is Michelle Wurzberger. I'm the Director of Government Affairs for the Baltimore Police Department. I'm joined by a number of my colleagues from BPD. We have Colonel Cherie Briscoe, we have Lieutenant Colonel John Herzog, Chief Woody Davis, Director De La Rocco, Director Jaeger, Major Dombrowski, Bill Joyner, Paul Minkarelli, Shannon Conway, and Esalie Johnson, Captain Esalie Johnson. And so, just like last time, the folks who have joined me today represent the, the folks who are a part of our multidisciplinary internal working group around facial recognition in the department. As you will recall, this bill provides for the BPD to continue to use the mirror system, the Maryland Image Repository System. Now, when we had this, this conversation last year for the first bill, as we argued that we should be able to acquire new technology that may develop in the future, what became really clear to us is that you all and the advocates were very anxious that we didn't have firm policies in place around the systems that we had. And so we took that concern to heart. We initiated this working group that actually also had some other members in addition to it who aren't here today, you need to see all, everyone. But, but, but basically, we are all sitting together, we have operations, we have technology, we have the consent decree team, we have our, our internal law department, we have a variety of different folks to figure out how do we use this in a way that is effective yet responsible and provides a process that we can then report out to you all. Because that's the other thing that we realized is in the, the first go-round, that we didn't have the data that folks were asking us. And so at the, at the hearing in February, what we promised was that we would report out to the, to the Committee at the next work session on what our progress was. And so I am very happy to report that we have made a great deal of progress. We have developed a, a draft policy that will then go through the consent decree process, which includes a variety of things. Many of you are already familiar with this because you're kind of involved or are monitoring that. And this, this is a process that we utilize when adopting any sort of policy. It all has to go through this process. So essentially, there is, we develop a draft, then we have a month-long collaboration with both the Department of Justice and the monitoring team. And at the conclusion of that month, then that draft policy gets put out for public comment for thirty days. Then the monitoring team, the DOJ, BPD takes those comments, makes adjustments based on, on what they have heard. Then after that, you know, policy has been updated, it goes back out for public comment. And then there is a final policy submitted for approval by the DOJ, the monitoring team, and then ultimately submitted to the court. And so, so we have a timeline for that, and that will, that formal process will begin next month. In the meantime, while we are building out that kind of holistic formal process, we are also developing an internal short-term process so that we can still continue to utilize the service, but also then start collecting data on what, how we're using it and start limiting who is able to access that program. And again, I think that this, this represents a significant departure from, you know, the, the BPD of yore, if you will. You know, we have embraced this need, this, this thirst for information about what we're doing and both with, you know, policies, with procedures, and, and then data that, that goes along with that. And so we will continue to keep you all updated. Once that, that draft policy goes out for public comment, we will absolutely send that to this Committee so that, and the rest of your colleagues, so that you can share that with your constituents, so that they can weigh in on, on those items. Another thing I just wanna kind of bring to your attention is that in our original bill report, what we argued there was that, that this bill was, you know, it came from a good place. It, it really does. You know, I think folks across the country are very anxious about how these types of systems are used. But that our position is that, you know, rather than exclude the use of technology, let's come up with ways and certain mandates so that anybody who uses these, these technologies can be transparent, so that they can be held accountable, including BPD. And so what I will say is, you know, there's a number of things that we said that the policy should include. For instance, who's authorized to use the technology, under what circumstances that technology could be used, and what sort of levels of human intervention are required. And, but more importantly, we also said that any policy should include certain, certain language such that it can be clear that, that that technology will not be used in furtherance of civil immigration enforcement efforts. That's a huge issue in, in the city as we have a several very large immigration populations of immigrants. Also, that the state's Attorney's Office will be notified when an arrest is made as a result of utilizing some of these technologies. We also said that, that the policy should be very clear that the technology is not to be used in violation of anyone's constitutional rights under the First, Fourth, or Fourteenth Amendments, and that surveillance based solely on religious, political, or social views or activities is, is, will, will not be permitted. Similarly, that the technology couldn't be used against folks who are participating in lawful events. And certainly, as we've seen how the last year has progressed and how Baltimore has had a number of lawful protests, certainly that would fall in line with that. And that, that finally, the technology could not be used solely based on race, ethnicity, citizenship, place of origin, age, disability, and similarly protected classes. And so this policy will include language to that effect. Again, we want to impress upon you that we are, in fact, you know, for lack of a better term, putting our money where our mouth is. You know, we are doing what we are saying that not only we should be doing, but any agency that use, uses this, this technology. And with that, Mr. Chair, I will stop talking and, and see if anyone has any questions.
Thank you. Before we move on to questions, I want to hear from the rest of the Agencies here. But I appreciate that the work that you guys have been doing to be thoughtful about what this means. I think this has significant implications for people's privacy, and I think we want to be very careful about that. I can see you guys are trying. I want to move on to the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Safety and Engagement. Do you have a representative on the line from Monsey?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair. Thanks. Director Jackson, hi.
Director Jackson. Any, any updates to your report from the initial?
The only update that I have to provide to the Chair and to Committee members is that we've had some subsequent conversations with the Councilman who sponsored the bill, that we've done some further investigative analysis and have determined that we've got no other recommendations to make, but we will be making a procedural change as it relates to the data that we captured through the City Watch application process. Specifically, what we're going to be doing is including a data field that is a Boolean field, i.e. a yes or no, on-off field that specifically requests applicants to determine or to share with us to the extent that they have knowledge whether or not the system that they are using for security has facial recognition software as a part of it. And that's just so that we have the data captured, and then it can inform any decision-making that needs to happen from a BPD perspective with regard to what the individual asks will be for any associated recordings.
Thank you, Director Jackson. Next up, we've got the Department of Transportation. Looks like we don't have a representative from DOT, so we'll move on to the Baltimore City Office of Information Technology. We don't have a representative from M Y T either. And finally, the, the Department of Finance.
Good afternoon, Mara James, Legislative Engagement Lead for the Department of Finance. We have no updates from our initial report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mara. All right, I want to open the floor to questions from the Committee. We're not gonna vote on this today, but I do believe we will vote on it next time. And I want to make sure that folks are crystal clear and have the opportunity to ask all the questions before we make that decision. So are there any questions from the Committee? Councilman Cohen?
Hey, Mr. Chair. Thank you to BPD and Monsey and the bill sponsor, and appreciate you all clarifying the Ring cameras. I know that that is definitely a concern. We have a network of cameras in our district that have been used in collaboration with BPD in some criminal cases, and so appreciate you all getting that clarified. Michelle, if I could just sort of like, I'm trying to understand, it seems like the policies should align with this bill in terms of where BPD is going. So what's the specific concern that you all still have with the legislation?
Good question. So to be clear, this legislation is, while it grandfather's in mirrors, which is the system that we are currently utilizing, it is, it prohibits the acquisition of any new technology, which none of us know if there, you know, if there's anything coming down the pike that will make, you know, mirrors look like, you know, useless because the new technology is just so much, so much better. And, you know, and, and I think, you know, Chief Davis may be able to expand upon this, but what we have seen, I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, sir, is that the, the technology has in fact evolved so that, you know, we, we still have a ways to go, but it, but it has evolved such that we don't know. And, and limiting our ability to get something new that will help with the crime fight is what we are really nervous about. And so the point that we made in our bill report and that we continue to make today is that, look, we, we hear you, we hear your constituents, we understand your concerns, but rather than make an outright prohibition, make us or any other agency jump through these hoops so that we can be held accountable, so that we can report out to you what we're doing, and so that you all can, you know, and your constituents can know exactly what we're doing and how we're doing it.
Got it. If I could just follow up on that line. And no, I do appreciate that, you know, that, that does make sense. I guess the question though is, you know, if the intent of this legislation is specifically around facial recognition, which, you know, I think the bill sponsor has aptly proved is problematic, is a technology that many cities across the country are finding to have inherent biases baked into it. And if we're still, you know, to the previous point, able to utilize cameras, utilize Ring, utilize doorbell, you know, and utilize whatever, you know, whatever current system you all are on as far as like cameras, what's the, is it just you're concerned about potentially losing this specific technology on the facial recognition piece, even though you would still have access to City Watch cameras, you would still have access to people's personal cameras if they wanted to provide you with the data and the footage? Like, is it just that one piece, which I think is the intent for the bill sponsor, around the facial recognition software?
Yeah, so, and again, any of the, my colleagues can, can definitely jump in here. But again, as we've seen how the, the technology has progressed and the way that we use the, the mirrors program, right? So it is essentially a digital, what is it called? Photo array. And so that is absolutely critical for us developing leads. Not necessarily, you know, arresting someone, but developing leads so that we can solve the case and then ultimately arrest someone. And so, you know, we, we definitely appreciate that mirrors has been baked into this bill, but we don't know if there's going to be a technology that makes mirrors, you know, that, that, that is superior to mirrors, such that any sort of concerns would be ameliorating.
Michelle, this is Chief Davis. I would even add that a lot of the technology, facial recognition, that, that terminology has so many different meanings and it comes at so many different levels. Although there are many statistical, there's statistical data that shows that, you know, many of these systems have biases, you know, there are statistical data that also shows that the technologies that see, that has evolved in the last five years have moved to a point where many of the, you know, the false positives and the biases that were baked into many of the original technologies have evolved to a point where that, the, the, the percentage of false positives almost are equivalent to a person looking at a mug book, where they say, hey, I see this person, I think that's the individual. And in some cases, it, the technology is, has less false positives. And so part of this is being able to have the opportunity, as Michelle has alluded to, to embrace this, this new capability that's coming up, coming on board. When I say embrace it, you know, we do, we, we pilot, we evaluate, we determine the, you know, whether the technology is viable for us. And so any investment in future technology would not be, you know, outright purchase, it would be a process. And, and this process includes, you know, policy development, procedures, processes. And from our perspective, this, as we've talked internally, you know, we understand the need for the oversight. We understand the need for being able to identify technical opportunities that are more advanced and evaluating those technologies to determine if they can provide us the services and capability that we need. A bill as it's written today would prevent us from even evaluating a technology such as this, where it may provide, you know, extensive value to us, where, you know, the biases that, that the, the current technology exists are overcome through the advancement of technologies. And, and I would add to this that the things that we're doing today is not facial recognition. It truly is facial comparison. So when we talk about cameras and ringtones and things of that nature, it's taking an image and comparing that image. It is not facial recognition as you would see on TV or you would think of, you know, a camera sitting there looking for faces walking by. We don't invest in that technology, we have no plans investing in that technology. And the technology that we really want to be able to embrace, which this bill I think would prevent us from doing, is those that would allow us to do more advanced facial comparison and, and opportunity to look at things like CCTV footage, photos presented, and other images that are presented to our detectives who, as you know, are working to solve crimes. This is, this is just one of the many tools available that we want to ensure the, our officers can get access to the tool. It is not the tool that says a person is guilty. It is not a tool that says this is the, the bad person or the culprit. It is not that tool, it is just one of many tools. And that, I think, is a very important part that we must consider when putting together bills such as this.
No, I appreciate that. And I'm not sure that this bill would preclude detectives from using CCTV footage. That, that wasn't my read of it. And also was wondering, just last follow-up and then I'm done, but Chief Davis, if you could present some of the data or some peer-reviewed studies on how over the last five years facial recognition has eliminated bias or reduced it to the point where it's less than like what people would see in a picture? If you, if you could present some of that data to the Committee ideally, Mr. Chair, that, that would be really helpful. I just haven't, I haven't read anything like that.
I would love to. And thank you for the opportunity.
Appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Chief, and appreciate it. Thanks, thanks, thanks to all.
Thank you, Councilman Cohen. Councilman Burnett, you got your hand up?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I had one just sort of clarifying comment and then a question. So I just want to remind the Committee that the concerns raised about the continued ability to assess technology are exactly why this, this bill is not an outright ban of the use of technology. It has a sunset provision in it that would require both reporting and continued discussion on this issue beginning December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. And my intention would be to continue to have those discussions as technology arises or as the department is able to identify, you know, their potential needs. Also a reminder that it doesn't preclude the department from working at the state level if there, if Monsey is, or not Monsey, if the mirror system is replaced by something else, this does not preclude access to that or any other changes and revisions. If it did, then we can absolutely come back, which is why there's a sunset for us to continue to have this conversation. So I just wanted to flag that, that, that is in the bill already and then in, after hearing concerns about, you know, changes in technology and the need to continue to look at it, which is what differs from the previous iteration of this bill from the last term. The, the question I had, and I did send this ahead of time to Michelle, there was an article published and, and let me step back. I do appreciate the department's self-adoption of regulations on this. And I would note that if we had local control at this time, that would be the approach I would take in the, in the ordinance. So just wanted to put that on the record that I am supportive of the policies adopted, self-adopted by BPD. I would note, however, that the department was referenced in a article that was published earlier this month in Buzzfeed News around the use of ClearView AI facial recognition, which has been banned in a few other countries and many states, given the extremely problematic nature of the techno, their particular software, which essentially acts as a sort of scraper of social media accounts and other software that most people would probably don't know their data is on. And I would note that the Baltimore City Police Department was identified as having used that technology and did not respond for comment when, when, at least at that, when the article was published, had not responded to comment on their use of the ClearView AI system. And would flag that I did ask about this in the last term, was the department using this particular software, which is outside of the mirror system, outside of any regulations, and, and compiles a lot of information that people, you know, Facebook accounts, Twitter accounts, things that, you know, you may, your, your photo maybe I posted by someone else, they are pulling that data. So it's not a flipbook like the mirror system. It is very much a, a software that scrapes publicly available information and uses that as a, a way to try and identify people. Would, would ask the department to comment on their use of it.
Sorry about that. Oh, go ahead. No, I was gonna say, sir, I've not heard of, do I have any knowledge of that, that software being used? But what I will do is I will reach out to other entities within our organization to find out if in fact the software had been used or is being used within our agency. And when they say reach out for comment, I'm not sure who they, who they reached out to, but no one has attempted to contact, or at least I've not been contacted by anyone asking for feedback.
So that, we will definitely, when we send the articles, we'll send you information about this as well to the entire committee.
Okay, yeah, that, that would be helpful. Like I said, I did send this ahead of time as to not have a gotcha moment, asking for, for comment on this. So I don't know. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilman. The, the question I have is, of course, as we consider this, this is, it's Thank you, Councilman. The question I have is, of course, as we consider this, this is, it's designed to sunset at the end of 2022. What does that mean for our agencies? What does that actually mean for B P D? Is this something, I mean, as we pull together and, you know, B P D has made strides since the last hearing that we held on this, on this bill and sort of building infrastructure, with this really only turning out to be a year and a half of consideration? What would this actually mean to B P D? What would it actually mean to other agencies? I know there aren't many others on this call when we think about the impact of taking some time to pause on it.
I mean, I think, I think a variety of things, but most importantly, one of the things that Chief Davis had mentioned is that as technology evolves, we would not even be able to evaluate if a technology would be of use to us. So if there is a straight prohibition, we can't even do that. We can't even go into an evaluation phase. So that's why we're saying, you know, yeah, so it limits our ability to be creative and to seek out new and better solutions, frankly.
Yeah, I'll be frank. This is, this is a difficult question and, you know, the more research I've done on this, this issue, I've looked into ClearView, I've looked into a number of other vendors that have this sort of technology. It's incredibly powerful and can be incredibly useful, but also potentially very dangerous if not, if we don't have the correct provisions in mind. And I know we struggle with closing cases. It's a problem that we struggle with, with our department. So, you know, as we think about whether or not we want to take this off the table, I want to be very thoughtful about the implications that it has for our department and also the implications that it has for privacy for everyday citizens and visitors to Baltimore City. You know, I think we're ahead of the curve in many ways in just having this conversation. So I want to applaud the sponsor for bringing this out. And I want to applaud the department for really digging into it and thinking about what a responsible approach could look like. Any other questions from the committee before we move to public testimony? Councilman Burnett, your hand is raised. Do you have any other questions?
I don't. I would just like feedback on the ClearView by the next hearing. And any, because the concern I have with that particular software and the way that it was framed in the article was that the company was marketing directly to officers in the Baltimore City Police Department, and they were using it without any oversight. And so I have real concerns about, you know, obviously, again, thankful that the department is taking the necessary steps to adopt internal policies, but would note that they don't currently exist right now, haven't been approved. And we have, and already have an incident now on the record indicating that the use of this software, which could be for anything from First Amendment protests to spying on spouse or any other sort of use that is out of bounds, frankly, or should be out of bounds, has already been taking place. And I think it really speaks to why we should take this up. I don't, I'm not certain that the department's ability, and would like more direct feedback on how a year and a half prohibition would stop them from doing research on other technologies. I'm not, you know, particularly, I don't think that was made particularly clear, how they would not be able to do research and come back to the council without having the ability to actually make a purchase ahead of the research. That, you know, that's not usually how my understanding of the procurement system works. Typically, the agencies would do their own independent assessments, and if determined there was a need, then make a request to procure a new software. This doesn't preclude the agency or any agency from doing research. It would preclude, you know, that final step. And so I just want to be clear about that, that that's not what this bill does.
Just one follow up, and certainly we can provide you with additional information about that and as well as the articles and information about ClearView. I do want to clarify that ClearView was marketed to individual officers, officers using that on their own. But our Deputy Commissioner of Operations sent a memo clearly stating that it was not to be used in the execution of their duties. And so that is something that we are not utilizing at present, but I will, in fact, get additional information for this committee about that.
Thank you. Thank you both. I'll give them one more opportunity. Any questions from the committee? All right. Seeing no questions, we're going to move on to public testimony. If you have any testimony, please raise your hand. I see we have testimony from Jake Parker.
Hello, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Hey, this is Jake Parker. I'm with the Security Industry Association. I'd spoken at the hearing he has in February on this. And our association represents technology providers, including those provide this technology we're talking about. Just wanted to add something here. The, you know, I definitely understand the department's concern about having options and looking at technology as it evolves. And we just saw on Friday, the mayor of Portland, Oregon, Mayor Wheeler, pleading with the public for information about how to identify some of the folks that had come into the city and perpetrated violence from outside the city, from outside the state. And I would submit that they wouldn't be in exactly the same position if they had not banned this technology several months ago. So it's just, I think, one example. But really, I wanted to bring up the other issue, which is, as I read the amendment, it looks like the ban on private sector use of the technology, which is the most sweeping, I think, has ever been proposed. It is still there after the amendment. And I know that the definition of face surveillance system, that's, you know, what's really, I think, the concern here is used by companies without knowledge of consent. But unfortunately, the way it's designed or the way it's defined is so broad that we're still talking about banning fully opt-in solutions such as services that help people authenticate their identity to receive services, customer access, hospitality, live events, travel, retail, talking about face pay type transactions. I really think a deeper look is needed on what the implications of that might be. And would submit that the call in the last section of the bill for a study of the issue in the interim may be, you know, a good approach to take as far as diving a little bit deeper. I understand it's a moratorium, more or less than this, but would be, I think, a better approach to dive deeper and study the issue before, instead of sweeping prohibition on the private sector use.
Thank you, Jake. Any other testimony? Please, please raise your hand using the raise hand function on the bottom right. All right, any testimony on the phone lines? Okay, we just unmuted the first caller. Do you have any testimony?
No.
Thank you. We've just unmuted the second caller. Do you have any testimony? Okay, hearing no testimony. I want to take an opportunity to jump into the amendments that Councilman Burnett has put forward. Councilman Burnett, do you want to talk through these amendments and what they mean and how they change the bill?
And so they are mostly, again, technical in nature. We want it to be as clear as possible that if both private sector or public sector want to use this biometric security systems to protect against unauthorized access to their location or electronic devices. And so I would respectfully disagree with the individual who spoke from the industry that this leaves, would prohibit things like face pay and other access to your personal devices. That was, we were trying to be very clear about that, that if you have an iPhone and you want to use this to confirm your payment, which I would note that is not actually facial recognition technology. By the way, it's a little bit different type of software, but either way, we try to make it as broad as possible that biometric security systems for unauthorized access to locations. And so if a private industry wanted to use this for access to a building, access to a event, any of that that would confirm or impact their ability to secure their location is specifically mentioned in the amendment, as well as additional clarity on, after getting feedback from the Department of Transportation, we made sure that we included the, you know, making sure that you could not use this for automated license plate readers or other sort of like traffic devices, which, you know, from the department's commentary, they don't really have a use for. And would just argue that sort of the larger concerns that advocates have raised across the country is the, in fact, that, you know, people should have an expectation of privacy when, or at least some level of it, when traveling, you know, on our city roads, that kind of thing. And so the use of facial recognition there may be going a bit far. But essentially, like I said, there would be very minor revisions from the bill that we were hopeful would capture the concerns about doorbells, the concerns about being able to access a private or public facility. And we made sure to keep as broad as possible in there things that we know are being used, you know, medical equipment systems, emergency management systems, parking, you know, things that we know we, the city may, there may be actual, some benefit to. In the future, we kept open. And so it, yeah, I can go line by line, but that's sort of the gist of it is that we were trying to make it as broad as possible for, after getting feedback from all of the agencies around, what they would actually need to continue to use the things that we already have. And again, just a reminder that, you know, with any sort of sunset, it gives us the opportunity to come back or we have to come back to reauthorize it. And so if there are new uses that this body would deem acceptable should this pass, you know, I'm open to those conversations. But that's essentially it. We were just trying to make it as broad as possible. So the concerns about being able to access public or private spaces was very clear that you could use this software for that.
Awesome. Thank you. Any questions from the committee? Can't see everyone. There we go. All right. Seeing no questions from the committee, we're going to go into recess. And I want to thank the sponsor. I want to thank B P D for putting a lot of thought into this. I know this is a pretty important consideration, and I think both have tried really hard to make sure that we find the sort of right spot. So I want to thank you both. Councilman Burnett, any closing words before we sign off?
No, just happy to anyone in the committee that has further questions, reach out to me. Happy to continue the conversation between now and the work session.
All right. Thank you. This committee is in recess. We will announce the next hearing for this bill at a later date.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.